Okay, ready? Okay, good evening at 6:00 PM on July 14th, 2021. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Also like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. Now if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that we will take public comments for every hearing at the end of that hearing. Okay, Associate Board Members George Ganz and Muller, Jim Raifath, and Charlie Reddy are absent tonight. So sitting on our first hearing will be our five regular board members. Sharon, would you read the first continued hearing, please?
15 Herring Gul Road. Owners Southworth Mashpee Property LLC request a variance under 174-31 land space requirements of the zoning bylaws to reduce the minimum lot area from 40,000 square feet to 32,181 square feet on property located in an R3 zoning district map, 76 parcel 125 Mashpee, Mass. Continued from June 23rd hearing, 2021, at the request of the attorney.
Okay, and I believe we have also a letter that just came in on July 6th.
It's dated July 6th, 2021. It's addressed to Mary Ann Romero. Dear Ms. Romero, Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, the applicant in this matter respectfully request permission to withdraw this request without prejudice. Please call should you have any questions. Sincerely yours, Jack McHellany, Attorney for Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC.
Okay, Ron, would you like to make a motion on this one?
I would love to make a motion on this one. I'd like to make a motion, do we accept Jack McHellany's letter of July 6th, 2021? Said letter is in reference to his request for withdrawal without prejudice in reference to his variance petition of 15 Herring Gul Road.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Jim Gould seconds. Let's do a roll call vote. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Anything to sign on this?
No.
No. All right, Sharon, would you read the next continued hearing?
104 DeGrasse Road. Owners Michael J. Ronhawk and Teresa A. Ronhawk request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a raise and replace of a pre-existing non-conforming two-bedroom dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling and a detached garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 104, parcel 18, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from June 23rd, 2020 hearing at the request of the board.
Is this yours?
Okay. Go ahead. Okay. Well, certainly some other developments that have come up since. And the person that was speaking when you walked in the room is Chris Gallagher, the brand-new engineer for the town who has looked at your plot plan. So before we get into that, I think there were some questions that Sharon had regarding the crafts room and the cedar closet, et cetera. So Sharon, if you would?
Well, I know that we sent back for you to make the entrance to the craft room six feet. But I did have a question about the cedar closet. It is, I believe, an eight-by-nine room, correct, with a window?
It's, yes, it's already an eight-by-nine room, but it's a crosswalk.
Okay.
The window is a cellar basement window.
Okay.
It's not an egress window.
It's not.
It can't be a legal bedroom if it doesn't have an egress window.
That's right.
Yes, it's a 12-by, wherever 20.
Yeah, so it can't legally be a bedroom without...
That was my question. You weren't here for the prior...
Board of Health might have an issue, but that's your argument, it's not an egress window.
Okay, now what about the, Ron, the, on the craft room? I know you, you made the case opening, but you put a door in the hallway. And Ron, could you speak on that?
Well, so I have a question then, the window that is in your craft room, is that also a basement window?
It's a, no, it's not a basement window, it's a regular window. It's a regular one. Well, it's a three-foot tall one.
Right, so that could be...
The, the door to that craft room isn't an issue if that opening, I can't, I have a very small plan. It looks like it says it might be five foot six. Glenn, Board of Health, are we looking for a six-foot case to open it?
Yeah, I changed the, I sent the...
It might say six, I can't read it.
Here's a question.
You can have...
It's a six-foot, it was changed to a six. You brought that up, and...
You can't walk to a bedroom to get to another bedroom.
No, but you wouldn't be, you'd come down the stairs like this, there'd be a door, and there'd be a door.
You come down these stairs...
Put a door there.
But there's no door there, no.
But it's not a six-foot opening.
You're saying it was changed to a six-foot?
No, that's a six-foot opening right there, not there.
Right where?
So from here, I believe from here to there is six feet, but right there is a six feet.
Oh, oh, I see.
See that new door that was put in? That's a change.
Yeah, that door, that door would have to be removed to make it a hallway.
We didn't change any doors, we didn't add any doors. Which door are you talking about, the one that goes to the...
To the, I guess, is it the bulkhead? It's like a hallway, it's like a hallway?
So if you want to come up, we'll show you, if that's okay. I think it's pretty easy.
This is just stuff Board of Health's going to call you on anyway.
Yeah.
If I may?
Yeah.
So this needs to be six feet from here to here, right?
It is, yeah.
Now that door has to be out, this is going to be a hallway.
Okay.
Because all you got to do now is put a door there, and all of a sudden you've got another bedroom again, right? So no door, no door, right?
No door.
Six-foot opening there, and you should be fine, correct?
There's a number on that door, I can't read it. If you get a bigger plan, if we have one, it'll tell you what number it is, you can say that in your comments about which door to be permitted.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that door...
Looks like door 10.
Has to be a hallway.
To go to the...
Is that like a 10?
Right, so that has to be a hallway.
Right, so the door has to be on the mechanical room instead of...
Yeah, well, it's already on the mechanical room. Do you have the number of that door by, do you have a bigger plan?
An interior door schedule, no, because they haven't...
Well, it looks like there's a number, right?
Yeah, there is a number.
Says 10.
Is it 10?
Does it?
All right, so there you go.
Okay. If someone were to ask me to make a motion, I need to know what number door that is that you're going to remove.
Door 10?
Remove door 10.
Okay.
And that opening now depicts six feet, correct? Because it's already yellowed out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So how many total bedrooms are you putting in?
Three.
Three.
Okay. So do we have any issues at all with that?
No.
That's all good?
The other floor has two bedrooms.
So if there were a motion to be made, Mr. Chairman, maybe it also should state that the craft room needs to be, remain a craft room and cannot be used for sleeping purposes.
Sure.
As well as the cedar closet?
Yeah.
And that might be overkill. I just have a question on the unfinished storage in that area. Does any of that present a problem?
Not if it's unfinished.
To anybody?
Not if it stays unfinished.
Right.
Unfinished, you can make a note, unfinished stays unfinished. Because there is a door to that area, and that is a basement, so that is his mechanical unfinished area.
In the motion, you could say that has to remain unfinished.
Geez, I mean, do I get, I don't get paid enough.
Yeah. We'll double your salary.
You'll make up for it, I'm sure.
Wow.
I know, I take a lot of abuse. So...
That was a good one.
So door 10 gets removed.
Craft room and unfinished...
Unfinished spaces to remain unfinished.
Space remain unfinished.
I mean, he can come back to the board to try to get, well, not the board, but he can go to the building department if he wanted to finish those spaces, just like finishing a basement. Okay.
All right, now we get to the issue with the, or potential issue with the plot plan and regarding whether it's one lot, two lots. Chris, maybe you could speak on that if you would, you could grab the mic.
Use the mic. Yeah, I, I think there might be a simple way to resolve this if you plan on doing it via the motion. Now, I've done some deed research, I don't know what your survey has done. This, the back piece is pretty cloudy. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but it's pretty cloudy. So for your, you know, for your benefit and the benefit of any future homeowners, I mean, I went by your site, what you're doing, I think is awesome that you're taking a rundown piece of property and making it something nice. And everything complies on parcel one. So if a decision was made, it should reference that the decision applies to parcel one only as shown on this deed book, 3108, page 279. Because parcel two's a little shaky. The only other caveats, I think, is you have to have parcel one square footage, which is 21,780, 21,780 square feet. And your coverage should be stated on your plan that it's only, the coverage contains only to parcel one. In other words, you...
You build it?
Yeah, so you take your 900 for your addition, your, I think it's around 750, 800 for the existing house, another 900 and change because of the half a foot for the garage. So it comes out to like 26, 2700, when 20% lot coverage would have been 4,400 roughly. So you're well under it. You still meet everything, but what a variance is granted, it runs with the deed. And your deed contains both lots, will still run with the deed, but I think it should, it would be better if it said that it contains to parcel one, the coverage to parcel one, and everything like that. Just it would be a clean...
So Chris, do you know the lot? Can you, in your infinite wisdom, calculate the lot coverage or approximate lot coverage? For one, because the site plan that we're going to make reference to, if I'm asked to make a motion, it's going to recur forward to this site plan, and it's all going to be incorrect.
Yeah, the coverage is...
Well, we're going to, we're going to ask for...
A new site plan.
A new site plan.
So do we make it...
Conditioned on a new site plan.
I mean, if it's not a big hurry, and another two weeks isn't going to matter to you, we just do it right, so, because I understand...
I agree.
There's been times where there's been plans, and my few, dealing so far with Dave, one of few things, there's been plans that, you know, should have been come back, corrected, looked at. So you spend a little more time, what's the hurry? And unless there's something urgent, you could correct, I could even go over it with you.
So, Chris, are you suggesting they continue? Or are you suggesting we can make a motion to approve, conditioned on a site plan showing...
Less than 20%.
Less than 20% lot coverage with just lot, parcel one?
Or something like, if I may, condition on a new site plan being submitted and approved by this board depicting calculations based on parcel one only.
And those calculations...
See that?
Those calculations would include the actual size of the lot.
And the petition applies to parcel one only.
Correct.
The size of the lot, the size of the buildings on lot one, and the actual lot coverage. So those three things would have to be included.
Lot coverage, building size...
And lot size.
And lot size, all for parcel one.
My office is across the hall.
Got you.
You could actually come over and I'll just write it all down for you.
Well, everything's already on there, it's just that you want lot coverage on...
It's not correct, it's not on here.
Yeah, so...
It's on here as two parcels combined.
But you're still going to be fine, because as I understand it, someone will make a motion. All you'll have to do is resubmit a plan once it's corrected, you'll possibly...
You don't have to come back here.
You will get your approval.
Right, you just want, you just want it...
Clean it up for the record.
Because it has to go to the registry of deeds.
Right.
So they need a clean...
This is in your best interest, by far. Because if in fact you had a cloud on parcel two on your, on your title, if you went to finances or anything else on the title exam and it comes out, says, wait a second, parcel two, and this shows 1% lot coverage, that's not correct, all this is incorrect, you're going to have to come back to us and start over again. You don't want that.
You don't want to do that.
This is in your best interest.
This helps you.
Thank you.
This will get you where you want to get to, thank that gentleman there. Well, so far, we haven't, we haven't voted.
I mean, do you want me, as part of this, to go through the plan and make sure it has the necessary amendments? I mean, basically, what's happened, just...
When he brings it back in, if you could look at it, that would be great.
So monetarily, how would we handle that, Chris?
Monetarily?
Well, so you're going to... Well, well, my point is this, I mean, we need to understand as a board, how to handle your, I mean...
He works for the town.
What happened is, Mary Ann approached me. So I said, well, you know, I'd love to help out, I have a job description, it's, it has a lot of broad descriptions in it, I'll have to ask Rodney. I answered directly to town manager Rodney Collins. So I asked Rodney, could I do zoning law review as I have time? And he said, anything you can do to help the town.
Okay, perfect, because we were told, remember, that you may not be able to do...
It's going to go to Dave anyway, when he gets the permit application, he's going to look at it, and just like if it was...
They both look at it.
Yeah, I mean, he's going to look at it, and if he has an issue, he's going to come to you. So, but if it shows under 20%, I don't think Dave's going to have an issue.
Well, he hits all the setbacks as far as all that goes.
Yeah, so when they submit the new plan, I don't think Dave's going to have a problem, so...
I agree, yeah. I think he'll be fine, I think it'll all work.
The only thing would be the septic and where he does have the future garage apartment and extra bedrooms, at least he's got room for plenty more bedrooms, so that would be an issue in the future, I guess.
But they're not going for the garage right now, right?
No.
Yeah, so we're not voting on that, but that's a good point.
All right, I think we got it.
I do too.
Okay, Sharon, I think we might have some...
There's some letters.
Yeah, I have some letters.
It's the same letter, we could probably just read our names.
Sharon, I might suggest you read that one letter and then just all the names that are associated with it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do.
Did we do that last time anyway?
No, we never get that far.
Okay.
All right, I have a series of form letters. They're all identical, but they're signed by different people, so I'm going to read them in, just the one letter, and then read each property owner. Sorry, I doesn't understand.
We have to clarify with Siri.
Okay. To Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, I am writing today to support Mike and Terry Ronhawk in their request for a special permit to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming two-bedroom dwelling and replace it with a three-bedroom dwelling and a detached garage at their property located at 104 DeGrasse Road. The new construction proposed by the Ronhocks will make an improvement to the neighborhood.
Can I stop for a second? It says the, including the detached garage, I knew that from the letter, but are we voting on the garage, or are we not voting on the garage? What's the actual...
For lot coverage, yes.
Okay, just for lot coverage. But not the structure, because we have to make comment about not finishing the space if we are voting on the garage. I just want to clarify.
Wait a minute.
What is the request for?
Yes, because it says on the site plan, it says future garage with accessory apartment. Accessory apartment.
His proposed dwelling in future garage, so we're not voting on the garage.
With accessory apartment.
But it says future, we're not voting on that, we have to make...
No. There's no, there's no finished space in the garage.
We don't have a plan for it.
Is the garage there today?
No, there's no garage there.
So you're not going...
We don't have a plan for a garage. When I talked to Dave about this originally, he said you should include that in the, if there's so going to be future garage, that it should be on this.
So we are voting on it?
So we are voting on it, we're voting on the garage, the space for the garage then.
But there's no finished space.
Yeah.
Then we just...
But it says with accessory apartment in the plan.
It says it on your letter.
And it says it on the plan.
With accessory, right.
It doesn't say it on the letter.
Oh, it doesn't say it, but two...
Detached garage.
Right there, it says.
It says future garage with accessory apartment, that's, yeah, that's troubling.
So we just have to drop the accessory apartment thing, we're not applying for that anyway, so...
The garage...
So when you submit the new plan...
Just cross that.
Just cross out the accessory apartment.
Just say garage.
So make comment, one more thing.
We'll turn that over.
So...
So the motion will condition the garage to have unfinished space.
It's just a...
Well, why don't we, so we don't have a plan of the garage, we don't even know, why don't we just say the garage is not included in the application, period?
Well, because I think they're trying to prove the space for the garage. So when he comes back, say he wants to build a garage, too, he is, he doesn't have to come back to us.
Okay, so...
Right, that's a footprint, that would be...
Yeah, proposed two-car garage with no finished space above.
Perfect.
Just to dot eyes and...
Sharon, would you like to continue?
Sorry, Sharon.
That letter was signed by Bella and Alex Salvant of 86 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Mike and Tracy Avat of 81 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Elizabeth Egan of 107 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Deborah Nelson of 113 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Dennis and Diane Scanell, 108 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Robert Hathaway, 128 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Jennifer McDonald, 103 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Robert and Dawn Rabello, 95 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, David Billidoo, 89 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Tammy and Lee Wise, 97 Blue Castle Drive Mashpee, Timothy Dorsey, 86 Blue Castle Drive Mashpee.
He should run for mayor. I would say everybody likes this plan.
You should run for mayor.
I have a lot more friends than I do. I think we need more people in the town before we need a man.
Either that, or there's really an I saw there. And they're sick of looking at it.
All right, Mary Ann, would you read conservation?
Mary Ann?
Comments?
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Sharon.
There are no comments.
There isn't.
We must have read it last time. Do we read Board of Health and...
I saw conservation comments when I read the, it said there's no com, oh, it says there are no comments.
There are no comments.
Right, that's the comment, there are no comments.
Correct.
Because I knew there was a comment.
Okay, any final questions? Comments? Anybody in the audience?
Do we have Board of Health comments?
No.
I read it last time.
Anything else? Okay, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to, here we go, let's have some fun. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Teresa A. Ronhawk and Michael J. Ronhawk of 104 DeGrasse Road under section 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaw to allow for a raise and replace of pre-existing non-conforming two-bedroom dwelling and a proposed garage, and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling, I'm sorry, two-bedroom dwelling, and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling and a detached garage on property located in R3 zoning district, map 104, parcel 18 Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions, one, Board is terming the applicant meets all conditions of special permit on Master General laws 48, section nine. Two, plot plan prepared by 104, prepared for 104 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Mass. Dated January 10th, 2020. Scale one inch equals 40 feet, plan revisions 426, 2021. Revised dwelling expansion, prepared by Stephen Doyle and Associates, East Falmouth, Mass. Signed by Stephen J. Doyle, professional land surveyor, number 37559. Plan revisions 0424, 2021. Revised dwelling expansion, 0630, 2021. Revised proposed garage. Three, construction documents for Ronhawk, 104 DeGrasse Road Mashpee, Mass. A-1, zero. Lower floor plans, A-1, one. Upper floor plans, A-1, two. Roof plans, A-2, one. Elevations, A-2, two. Elevations and sections, A-3. Sections provided by Chris Warner Architects, 293 Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass. Condition on all town, department commentary in the record. Also, the following conditions are part of the motion. Number one of additional conditions would be door number 10 depicted on plan A-1, zero will be removed. Two, the cedar closet will remain a cedar closet in perpetuity unless coming back, unless you come back to this board and seek additional approvals. The crafts room will stay as a crafts room in perpetuity unless you come back to this board and obtain its approval to amend that. The unfinished space will remain unfinished space, as depicted on the plan, will remain unfinished space in perpetuity unless you come back for this board for additional approvals. Next condition. Prior to the applicant seeking a building permit, a new site plan will be prepared by a registered land surveyor, and it will clearly depict lot coverage, building size, and lot size utilizing parcel one only.
Did we miss anything?
Oh, I still, I'm not done.
Hey, you just turned the page.
Okay. The proposed garage will have no finished space or accessory apartment contained within.
You also missed the door 10.
I got it.
You got it.
I wasn't listening.
Okay, do we, do we have a second? Jim seconds. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Jim? Ah, Jim. Bill?
I'll be Bill tonight, that other guy. That other guy over there.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you. That was fun, huh?
That was great. Good job.
Getting violent.
What's going on?
Mary Ann, what, I'm Jim, yep, I got you.
Harry.
Sharon now.
Yeah, I became Mary Ann.
The new Sharon?
What did you say when he asked you, what'd you say, I can't read?
All right, Sharon, would you read the first other business?
We don't have to sign anything? No. Sorry.
We want to hear without signing anything.
We've all forgot how to do all this.
Come on, Sharon.
That's why I'm here now.
What is this? You know what, I got here and I looked at this.
I got good at holding that side.
Right there. I love it.
The old Zoom days.
Oh my God.
Never went to a meeting without me holding the side.
I know. Those were the days. I enjoyed them more, actually. It was fun though.
Very convenient.
It was, I had a couple of meetings, I wasn't even in town. It was great, loved it.
Thank you.
I'm not on, on the sign-off sheet. No.
Okay, scratch one of the names out and put your name, one of the people that's missing.
I'm sorry.
Was that a?
Because you're Jim now.
Did your house?
No. Nope, I haven't heard anything, unbelievable.
I got it.
Yeah. I didn't do anything for him.
I will not miss that.
I'm going to fight with him over his next...[1681.26]
I don't think so. I think I was always.
Other than forget about your bills.
I'm gonna fight with him over another proposal.
Realizing his bills are good things.
Thank you. And I am in favor. Sign of the crack line.
I'm gonna have to separate the two of you.
Sign on the crack line.
You know, so I'm, I'm, I'm in a battle with him over that. There's another one he's already, he's already.
Maybe second guess myself.
Sharon, thank God you're here tonight.
Um, you're the. I know, but they told me to make sure everybody signed on the right line.
I'm extremely literate.
I, I stopped that when I told my engineers sign off on the foundation walls. Just stop. There's a lot of.
Hey, I've kept this thing going. Hey, I've kept this going for years now.
You know, I've, I've dealt with him for three properties and they're all a disaster.
Did you show him where to sign?
Uh, see, you see, he does need me. Scott, Mary Ann.
Coming back.
Back to Sharon.
Sharon, here you go. I mean.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we move to approve the meeting minutes of two, June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second.
Okay, Scott seconds. All in favor? Raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You weren't here?
I was not here. I don't know if I was here.
I don't think Ron, you weren't there either, were you?
Yeah, but I read it. I think I did.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
All right, Sharon, would you read the next other business?
Vote to reorganize board appointments.
All right, so as everybody knows, at the start or the end of the fiscal year, we need to reorganize the board. The start of the fiscal year was, I believe, July first, right? We tried to do it last time, but most of the people that are here now were not here. So we postponed it till tonight, even though we have three people missing, we really don't want to wait any longer. So, uh, we need to elect a new chairman, a new vice chair and clerk. So I'd like to accept nominations. Uh, let's start with the chairman. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate.
I nominate John.
John Ferbush.
Okay, do we have any other nominations?
None.
None.
Okay.
You're it.
Okay. Is there a second?
I just did.
Okay, Jim second.
Everybody?
How does everybody vote?
Yes.
Okay. That was pretty easy, wasn't it? All right, so we're gonna do the exact same thing for our vice chairman. So, do we have a nomination for a vice chairman?
I nominate.
Nominate Mr. Blaisdell.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, we have a second. How does everybody vote? Yes. Okay, for clerk, do we have a nomination?
Ron Bondi.
I'll second.
Any, wait a minute, any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Okay, Jim seconds. All in favor? Well, that was pretty easy, wasn't it?
Not in your doubt. Let's go ditto next time.
All right, would you read the last other business?
Vote to approve and discuss the peer review cost sheet from the consulting engineer for twenty, thirty and forty-one Evergreen Circle and fifty-three Mercantile Way.
Perfect, so.
Do you want Chris to present?
Uh, yeah, because, you know, I'm looking at the cost sheet and I wouldn't know if it was a good cost or a bad cost.
I think it looks like a good cost.
I think it's a great cost.
I do too.
So. I'm really impressed with their pricing. Very happy with it, actually. And I spend a lot of money on peer review.
So that's what we need to, get somebody that's familiar with it.
I did a conservation peer review in the town of Bellingham a month ago for first phase of a development. And I wrote a check. We brought eleven thousand dollars for the peer review for conservation. Okay, so.
You're selling yourself cheap, though.
Well, my point is, my point is this, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, if I could ask a question.
Please.
Could we, is it okay with you, Chris, if we alacot this? In other words, if an applicant comes in and we, we don't feel comfortable with something and you've got a line item. Let's just say, uh, we want you to do a site visit, take pictures or review site conditions, but that's all we want you to do. That's three hundred and twenty dollars. Can we do that piece? Or do we have to do the whole?
This is, this, these costs are for Ed Pesci.
Yeah, something different.
These are for Ed.
So that's for an outside consultant. So if you choose that you're too busy or you can't handle or don't want to handle peer review, then we go outside and we talk to Ed Pesci about this. I think.
Because that, that may happen.
So there's, there's a she from Ed Pesci, which is.
That ties in because the last time we were talking to Evan, he actually said, hey, I'm not so sure that we're gonna be able to use a town engineer for peer review. And we said that because he's too busy and just can't stand that a lot of time.
So if we have to hire somebody, this is the sheet.
So how do we know if you're, or are, or, how do I put this? Is it that you cannot, will not, or are not able to do any peer review or can you do, it's almost like tonight you were gonna do a little bit of almost a peer review by working on something for the prior applicant.
Yeah, no, I could, um, I mean, I've been on both sides as well. I had my own engineering company for years and did peer review and I worked with tons of developers and I still have a, you know, thirty lots left in the seven hundred unit, fifty-five are overpacked, finishing up.
Must be in the middle world?
No, I did, I did the perk test and started that for Gary Diamond, you know.
I know him very well.
Yeah, me and my brother Frank did a lot of the drainage. Gary would come up every Friday and say, how many hours you work? And he'd cut a check. He was great. But, um, my brother continued on to work for him and took off to Australia for a while.
Yeah, so, so we're just trying to understand the dissemination between you and this.
I would say that any peer review that would be for a private, um, organization or a private company would probably lean more towards Ed Pesci. He doesn't need to be involved in something like that. At town properties, I would say we'd go, uh, with him. Residential, I told Mary Ann, probably the only peer review for residential would be for that, um, bylaw for, um, um, emergency equipment for, um, this, for the driveway that he would have to take a look at.
I may have trouble on large-scale projects. I mean, I can handle them. I've designed them. I've permitted them. But when the sewer kicks in, yeah.
Yeah, he's, yeah, you got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but someone like this couple that just came in to hit them up for three thousand dollars for something I could take care of in an hour or two.
Do you concur that some, these numbers look reasonable?
Yeah, I think they're reasonable. I think, I think, I think they're reasonable.
I think they're very reasonable. And, and my thing is, is I was very happy with the way he, he put them line item wise so that we can pick out each one if we choose to, if in this necessity, uh, comes into play that, you know, we need, like I said, just a site condition report because we're concerned about site conditions or whatever. And we can then go that route.
So if we feel, when someone makes a, an application to us and we feel we need some sort of peer review, do we first go to you, Chris?
I think Mary Ann could show me the project and if I'm comfortable with it, I do it. And if it's something that's a much, much larger magnitude, I don't know what comes in front of you and how often things, but if it's a couple here and there.
Yeah.
You know, a couple a month, I'm fine.
My concern is, how do we, as an app, so an applicant comes in and one person goes peer review outside and spends three thousand? And I get it, that's probably a bigger job, right? I get it. But, um, the other applicant comes in and we use him, Chris, and Chris isn't charging. We should probably have some type of payment schedule for even Chris, even though he's a town employee.
Yeah, David's, David's gonna guide us through.
Yeah, I mean.
Which one goes where.
Yeah, me and Chris have already established pretty intense, well, working, uh, relationship, you know, and very quickly because of some of these issues that would be gone. So I'll be working with Chris, um, throughout, so.
But I guess my question is, is, and I'm on the other side, right? As a developer, I sit there and say, all right, I come in and, and I'm building a, I don't know, three lot subdivision or something, and we don't need peer review, we just want Chris to take a look at it. Well, all of a sudden, it doesn't cost me anything because Chris works for the town. Or this board votes when.
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how you do that.
Probably handle about anything that comes in front of you, to be honest with you. I'm excluded from planning board specifically in my job description, so I don't have to deal with any planning board review.
But we should probably, and this is my recommendation as one member, we should probably get some type of fee schedule from him because.
I agree.
It shouldn't cost the town. I've, I've said to Rodney more than once, just in passing, that this stuff shouldn't be costing the town per se. Our time, we, our time is our time, right? But his time is, is.
All right, I'm, I'm not sure that this decision is ours. I think it's more of a Rodney decision to find out.
I don't know if it's a conflict either, you know, so.
Yeah.
Whether or not, um, if something goes to Chris, are they going to charge the person for Chris? That's, I don't think that's our decision.
Does Chris fall under the building department? Because aren't you, when you're paying for a permit, aren't you paying for his services?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, like, I mean, when you're coming in to pay for a permit.
That's not our decision.
I know, that might be a selectman decision or whatever, if they want to adjust the payment schedule.
Who would ask the question of whom, I guess is, is the next issue. I mean, who's, who's gonna ask? I guess the question goes to Rodney. The question is, is if he starts spending some fair amount of time with this board's app, applications.
It probably goes, it probably will go to the selectman or something like that.
Right. It's, yeah, it's not up to us to decide whether or not these people get charged.
So as chairman of this board, do you ask that question of the selectman?
No, I really think it's.
I mean, I'm not sure of the nature and magnitude of what typically comes in front of you.
Well, we get plenty of these as you see the industrial park stuff.
Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna.
It's the industrial park stuff.
And, and the industrial parks, I'll tell you, it's got drainage, it's got drainage calculations.
Coffee lots.
It's got some pretty extensive, it's not an hour of your time, so some of these applications would take a fair amount of time if you look.
Except Charlie Rowley, all this time he's starting up.
Would Charlie Rowley get paid?
This comes before a plan review, so he'd know it would be coming.
Can we do this? Can we say that for each case, if the peer review is required by us as a board, that's the fee schedule? Whether it's the town engineer?
Or the question begs to be asked is, do we have a right to do that when he works for the town?
No, we need approval from Rodney.
I, I'd be okay with that as long as somebody above us says that we can do that. And we should do that.
That way there's no confusion.
I agree.
If you go inside or outside, well, why did I have to go outside and pay that? If I went inside, I paid something different.
Right.
What, keep it consistent.
I think that makes total sense. The only question is, is who asked the question?
Somebody's gonna ask Rodney.
Well, I, I would generally, when it comes to the money, I would say that you, you put, you have a, um, a fund, right?
Yeah, but do we have a right to do it? I mean, and should we do it? Rodney might say, no, he works for the town.
That's why, yeah, well, that's where we should, you know, they, if you're gonna have peer review, you continue it so that the funds can be accounted for, uh, for whatever funds they might be.
But I think my.
You don't have to set them, I don't think.
No, I agree, but the question is, is can we as a board say that you have to use, are you gonna use, we've asked Chris, Chris can do the peer review for this specific site and we're gonna charge three thousand dollars for that peer review and the check will be meant out to the town of Mansfield, of Mashpee. That being said, my question is, do we have a right and does, does the town want us to do that? Rodney might say, I'm not Rodney certainly, number one is, we don't have a right to do that, or number two, I don't want you to do that.
Well, like I said, it's not that we charge, you put an escrow account of, of something that would cover how much, whatever it's going to be.
Yeah, so he puts the escrow.
They figure how they're doing, because they could actually take part of the building, of the building permit fee and put it in escrow every time.
Might you want to take this up with Rodney and?
Absolutely.
And then this was, you know.
Yeah, that's a conversation that Chris, Dave and I should probably have with Rodney.
Agreed.
Isn't this similar to when you have to do mailings to a butters and the applicant has to pay for that mailing?
Well, that's in man, it's a, the man state law.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, I, I do, I know it's a state law. My experience with.
It's a state law that they have to pay for?
And you, and you get it, and the list has to be certain.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I've been on a planning board for eighteen years now and I've been in front of a ton of different boards and peer review, we've been on both sides. What happens in some towns is plans go around to the departments for review. I'm just another department. So it'd be in effect, have a comment, it's no different than Dave. If something came that appeared to need additional review, like say you've got a forty B coming in.
Right.
That's something I probably don't want to focus my attention on when I'm in the.
Right.
Yeah, that's a lot.
But it would seem to me you should get involved, I would think that you should get involved at the site plan or the design review step. Soon as it comes to the design review, before it even comes to us, he should be looking at it and, and then the comments come to us and he.
He's already seen it.
Yeah.
We've already, we already decided that if it needs a peer review, we're gonna get that information from Dave. Dave's gonna tell us this should go to a peer review. We've already figured that out.
Okay.
So the question is, if it's a peer review, which one is it? Is it Pesci or Gallagher?
When a project gets submitted, does it typically go to all different departments?
Yes.
Well, it goes out of front of a plan review.
Yeah, yeah, everybody, everybody has comments, yes, typically, yeah.
I'm saying, that level is when.
We have a plan review committee meeting.
Well, residential isn't gonna plan review for a single paper.
Are you, are you involved in this?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Lot, lot scale.
Yeah, so that, that's a good way to get all these things out.
But he made a comment today, he was helpful today. He helped us out greatly with this one.
No, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to meet with Rodney if you guys want to join me. We'll just talk about this.
Yeah, I mean, definitely.
As an employee of the town, that's great. We have that now.
And I think the town engineer.
Not chargeable.
No, no.
Oh, man, I, I.
Because it's a town piece of property that's.
It's a level. Let's just say he done.
Well, some of this peer review you can do, is that correct?
Yeah, but we could put it under review by the town engineer instead of peer review. If you need outside peer review and feel you do, you're well within your purview, you're right to go.
And it seemed to me we should ask you, so if we decide that we would like to have the town engineer review something.
Yeah, we should ask.
Shouldn't the motion be, or how do we understand that you're gonna either say yea or nay to that?
Yeah, you, you may want, I mean, Rodney is my direct boss, that's why I answer to him.
Why doesn't Rodney check, I mean, this is the, is this the first time Mashpee's had a, a, a town engineer?
Since I've been here.
So why doesn't Rodney or someone reach out to Falmouth, Barnstable, I don't know if Sandwich has one, I know Falmouth and Barnstable do, and see, how do you handle this? How do they do it? How do other towns do it?
That would be a Rodney thing, right?
Well, I said, yeah, Rodney would have to do it.
Sandwich, Sandwich does have a, a town engineer as well.
I just, where I don't wanna be is to make a motion and have this board approve that motion that says that the town engineer needs to review this. And the town engineer says, Jesus, you really laid a lot of work on me. This is gonna take me a month. You know, I, that's gonna be a very bad scenario for us because.
I would just see how other towns do it. And this is a smaller town. How does, there's probably one guy in Falmouth and that's a lot more property.
And I can tell you, most towns that I work in, like, say, one test I'm doing now is town engineer does it.
This is conversation that we should have with Rodney.
Yeah, I mean, when I spoke with him and said, you know, Mary Ann approached me about looking at some zoning plans and all, I'd be happy to. And, uh, I said, you know, I thought I'd run it by you before I did anything and get your blessing. And he said, hey, anything you can do to help out the town, help out another board, that's fine by me. And that's probably the answer he'll give you, so I think it, you know, probably make you feel.
Maybe we're making, we might be making too much of this.
Yeah. Well, until it's broken, let's not fix it.
Yeah.
So we'll, so I guess some of those motions will include town engineer review. And if somewhere down the line you feel like you're getting amused, let us know.
Let us know which way you want it to go.
Don't approve the plans until he's looked.
Right.
Yes, it might be continued until the town engineer has a chance to look at it and you might have to go to Mr. Pesci.
I, I, I think though.
Right, so you're gonna have a clue on, on most, almost everything that comes here.
Yeah.
But they, they might have a question that we can't answer, so.
I, I think so. Didn't we all decide that we're not gonna make anything conditioned on town engineer review? We're gonna make that happen before we make a motion.
We're not gonna approve the final decision and, but we can make, we're gonna make a motion based on this needs to go to town engineer for review, come back to us.
That's not a mo, well, that's continuous.
Continuous, I guess.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We've been approving them.
Right.
Conditioned on town.
We're not, we, we reckon, we're told not to do that.
We're not doing that anymore.
But there would be some type of decision made that it's going to town engineer and then has to come back to us for further review.
That's correct. That's the way I think we're gonna go with it.
Right there, okay.
Can I ask a question though? So, I'm, I'm of a business with peer review for twenty, thirty, forty-one, ten, fifty-three Mercantile.
Yeah.
You approved the plans and it's already in the decision.
That it, it was conditioned on town, uh, on our engineer review, right?
Right, but you already approved it.
But we've seen the light. We're not doing it that way anymore.
So what Mary Ann's asking then is, do we need to readdress those cases? Is that what you're saying?
I would think both those have to go to the town engineer.
Okay.
Town engineer needs to review them, make whatever changes. And then they gotta come, those changes have, the plans have to be put in the folder like we use, you know, well, we used to do with, um, Charlie Rowley. He's just got the Charlie Rowley face on him.
So it's just.
For those two.
So, so Mary Ann, the question I think you're asking is, or at least the question in my mind is, for those four cases, we condition them on, uh, Charlie Rowley at the time, review.
Well, it said Charlie or.
Or his.
That would be Chris.
Okay.
And.
Okay.
Does that mean?
So, so we.
Do any of those four cases can?
I looked at those.
Oh, you did?
They have to be brought.
They just want me to look at the plans and make sure they comply with the decision.
So we vote on?
I just want you to vote on having Chris look at, because.
At those four cases?
Yes, because Ed was expecting, you know.
And if, if, if Chris looks at them and he doesn't feel it needs any further review or if he feels he can't handle it and it has to go to, who's the outside here?
Yeah, so you just need to.
No, we both, we are, so, wait a second, I'm all mixed up now.
Well.
So we made a motion that says we're approving this application. Sub, with one, one of the conditions of many, I'm sure, was that the town engineer or his counterpart needs to review the plans and if any modifications, put them on a plan and put them back and probably bring them back to the board for our file file or something, right?
Okay.
And so if we made that motion, I presume that was the motion, because I.